Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call today's Columbia County Planning and Zoning meeting to order. If you stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
Help out with us. My dear Lord, we want to thank you for another beautiful day. Thank you for the rain we've gotten lately. Thank you for all the many blessings you bestow upon this community, our state and this country. May I ask that you look over all our first responders that are out there protecting us on day-to-day basis, day and night. We thank you for all the folks that have come out to participate tonight. May I ask that you give us all safe passage home this evening? All these things, in Jesus' name we ask.
Thank you. Be seated. If I could ask you to please, oh, I'm sorry. I mean, I just got excited.
Congratulations to the flag and states of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Now you can be seated. You got in a little late, so I'm out of my routine tonight. We do have all, or four commissioners present tonight for an 80% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to read the minutes from the August 4th meeting. If we have no changes, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion approved. The minutes passes 4-0. We also had a chance to review the agenda for tonight's meeting. If there are no amendments to that agenda as it's been presented, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion approved. The agenda as submitted passes 4-0. Sir, if I could ask you to please remove your hat while you're in the meeting? Thank you very much. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on September 6th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Catherine Wise to attain a request to speak for them. How many folks have been to a Planning Commission meeting before? Okay, so for those of you that haven't, we have two opportunities for you to address this board on the record. The first will be during our public hearing section. If there's an issue that is being presented that you have a position either for, or you'd like to speak against that particular issue, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come to the microphone, give us your name, home address, and any, take three to five minutes to give us your position either for or against. We've got a second opportunity in our public comments section at the very end of the meeting. If you have an issue that doesn't have anything to do with something on the agenda tonight, would like to get it on the records, so that the Commissioners get that message because they do get the tight minutes, and most of them actually will view or listen to the proceedings because it's our job to get more comment than they have an opportunity to do. We look a little more in-depth on things. So just raise your hand. Again, we'll ask you to come to the microphone and in three to five minutes, give us your opinion on whatever issue you've got. That being said, we'll move right into tonight's agenda. Let's see, Ms. Montgomery, the first item is some unfinished business filed, RZ 220704 RA to PRD.
Yes, sir, and we'll preface this by saying we do have a request to postpone this item again, so I'm going to go through this one pretty quickly since we have, we're not presenting the updated information tonight. This is a request for a rezoning off Clanton Road and Old Perry Place from Residential Agricultural to Planned Residential Development. This is the location of the parcels involved on the west side of Clanton Road and currently zoned Residential Agricultural as are the, mostly immediately surrounding properties. We do have the S1 zoning property to the south for the church that was reviewed at the last meeting and postponed to September 1st, and the Whispering Pines, a planned unit development to the east. Currently, these are undeveloped properties, and this is the existing site, Clanton Road. At this portion of it is still unpaved. That would change if this property were developed. This is the existing conditions map showing the environmental features on the site and the previously submitted concept plan. We have received the updated concept plan, but we've not had time to review it at this point, so it is not being presented or considered at this time. These were the proposed amenities with that plan and the drainage plan to address some of the setback requests that were originally made. Again, that has changed with the new submittal. This is in the neighborhood's character area, so this is an area that is targeted for future residential development. We are recommending postponing the request, and the applicant has formally submitted that request to postpone to the September 1st meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here? It's Ms. Lawrence. You'd like to add anything?
How are y'all? Thank you for your time. Keith Lawrence, 211 Dixon Court, Evans, Georgia, 30809. We have been working over the last three weeks on a new plan, several iterations, going back and forth to kind of address some of the residents' concerns in Kioki Ridge, as well as some of the Commissioners' concerns, and I think we've got a good plan. It's nothing but 10-foot setbacks, no requests on any changes of setbacks beyond what PRD has, no justification for anything reduction on that side. I think it's a good plan. You know, I want you guys to have some time to look at it. I want staff to have a chance to look at it, and we're going to probably meet sometime next week to go over their, any concerns that they may have on there. Excuse me. And then I'll be meeting with the, I'm going to be posting a sign for a meeting with residents in that area for Wednesday next week at 6:00 over at the Plaza on the fourth floor, so we'll have that also out there to be able to go through these things in fine detail.
So at that time, you'll have actually what you're going to propose to staff and to the Commissioners and to us?
Staff has it.
Okay, staff does have it, okay.
Yeah, the staff has it, and I sent it to Ms. Connel. We've met a number of times on that, and then I just talked to Mr. Wheatley right before the meeting, and I'm going to go out there and meet with him, make sure he has a chance to digest everything. So it's less units, you know, same 10-foot set, I mean, going with 10-foot setbacks.
Are you working with Redeemer at the same time about the traffic concerns?
I still have, I still owe Bill Corde a call on that because they have some same-traffic concerns, I guess same-traffic comments relate to both neighborhoods, very similar. So we will have, by that time, we will have something, what we'd like to do is meet with them and try to get some type of an agreement, kind of, so that one party's not burying the full load, because I know the church has got a difficult, going to have a difficult time meeting the costs associated with that, that particular one. So we'd like to have, I'd like to have something kind of, at least maybe not pinned any, but just something to present to you guys so that you guys can know that both are going to be addressed at the same time.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If you have something you'd like to add for the record for this particular issue, I'll open up the floor, but I would encourage you to wait, if you have something, until Mr. Lawrence presents exactly what we're going to be reviewing because it, from what we've had in the past, it may change who knows how much, so we really don't know what we're dealing with at this point. But that being said, is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Come forward and give us your name and home address.
My name is Roy Wright. I live at 2635 O'Pier Place. Throughout this process, no one has come to us. We live, I was born and raised, and I came home from the hospital to our property in O'Pier Place, and I've seen it change. I know that progress is inevitable. I work for the county. I'm a firefighter county, so I know progress is inevitable, but this is going to increase. I don't know if I can show you all some pictures of some things that have happened in the past, but we, O'Pier has become a dumping ground. I have pictures of trash that I picked up and loaded in my truck. I've almost been hit by kids that are traveling, we have more population out there, travel up and down O'Pier, and there's no plans for O'Pier, nothing to do on O'Pier. We're going to have houses backed up to it. It's going to increase more traffic flow. It's a private drive. It clearly says private drive. We've put private property signs up, but I don't stop people. I maintain the drive. It's been a effort from cooperation between all residents up there, but real recently, I've gone maintaining the, maintaining the road. I scrape it, you know, occasionally, and I'm concerned with, once these people get in here and their property's back up to O'Pier, they're not going, you know, if it's 6:00 on Sunday evening and they're out cooking, you know, out in the backyard, and I'm on a tractor, I can see that being, you know, a potential problem in the future. I would like to see, like I say, I've, kids travel up and down that road now, just exploring. It's three tenths of a mile from Clanton Road to the corner, well, you don't have to picture it anymore, but to the corner of right there where the first property line is right there, and that's three tenths of a mile from Clanton Road to that point, and it's got some curves, blind curves in it. It's been, it's, Mr. Wheatley, I taught him, you know, he's been there his whole life, and he explained to me that was just old farm road back in the day, and that's just where the, route of the road, and it's never been that much of an issue till recently. It's more people just, and with the growth out there, people just, they're curious. They want to see what's up there, and kids, I mean, they drive down that road and they're kids. I was a kid once, I know, but it's getting where it's a lot more traffic of that road, and I don't know if y'all can, but here's, here's an example. That's an example of what we deal with now with the growth that's up there, and you can see here's where I picked it up in my truck.
Roy, you can, you can write on that screen. Can you indicate on the map where your house is?
My house is, well, you can't see it on here. Have to move. I'm back over here. It's not in picture. It's just, just in picture. It's at the top, top of the frame right there, right about the center. You can see my drive. Right where the, where old is, that next lot is mine, just past old. Right, just, just above that arrow. But this trash right here, this is Clanton Road right here with the power pole. That's, that's the pole at the corner, woke here in Clanton, and this is the trash, you know, that's the trash that was dumped there. Recently, there's been, somebody redid their landscaping and just dumped hedges right there. I don't have a picture of that. My brother got those up, all except for, there's like two that was up on the bank that were not in the road, and it's actually right by y'all's sign for the meeting. This is another picture of trash I picked up on Clanton Road right there. It's just an increase of traffic.
I would suggest, Mr. Wright, that you get with Mr. Lawrence and talk to him about, about some, some possible solutions for that. He's a pretty-
Like I say, I'm not opposed. I know growth is inevitable, but this is impacting us, and they haven't come to us. This, you know, these cities-
Well, right there's the man. All right.
Who else lives down on that road but you?
Um, it's all family. Um, you know, that's where I grew up.
I know exactly where it is.
It's all, it's all family. I was, I was, my parents bought that place in, I think, around 65.
And that's, do you use, yeah, a driver? You've got an easement to go about?
Well, it is O'Pier.
Okay.
Um, like I say, my parents bought a place in, I think, 65. I was born in 68, and that's where I'm still at, and it's-
Knew your daddy before he passed?
Oh, yeah.
All right, well, I'd ask you to get with him. And sir, if I could ask you to remove your hat while you're inside, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close. Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and home address.
My name is Sandra Saul, and my address is 111 Old Oak Lane, Evans. Our property backs up to this, the Laurel's, it's planned. We have approximately 24 acres, and the Laurel's is, is backed up to our property. We oppose that because we don't know what price these homes are going to be, and I'm sure they will be much less than the people in Kioki Ridge subdivision, and we just don't want to know how it's going to affect the value of our property. Also, they say it's an age 50 and above, which, that's fine, but what about the kids and grandchildren that might be coming back home, you know? What you going to do with your children? Can't tell them no, you can't live here.
Okay. I would suggest that you get with Mr. Lawrence and go to his presentation when he does that, and he'll answer all your questions. I think it's 55-plus is, okay, portions of it are, so, and there are some, some, some homes that would not be regulated to 55-plus, but I believe the 55-plus, if I, if I read the, the stuff from, from HUD, not HUD, what, I forget the national agency, but I believe they limit you to having 90-day occupancy, so if grandkids wanted to come spend the summer and that kind of thing, they would be allowed to, but they wouldn't be able to come and stay for nine months just so it would coincide with the school year. I believe that's the restriction on the national level on, on something like that if it's designated as a senior community. Great. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you coming out. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to dis, with conditions to disapprove or to postpone until September 1st.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ 22-0704, rezoning from RA to PRD of Clanton Road to September, September 1st.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor to postpone till September 1st, 2022? Motion passes 4-0 to postpone. Mr. Butler, file RZ 220803.
Mr. Chairman, I request for a major-
Gentlemen, if I could ask y'all to please take a seat.
This is a request for a major putter vision at 1016 Barrett Drive to allow existing deck, fence and screen to remain. Again, it's currently zoned PUD and currently used for single-family residential. There's a location of the property on the south side of Barrett Drive. In current zone, planned unit development, you do have, again, more of the PUD around it than you have some R1 on either side of the development itself, and across streets from C2 and P1. There's an aerial view of the property. We'll be dealing with this existing deck here and the fence back here and a little screen over here. We'll see in a moment. There's a plaque of the property, again, highlighted there in red, the existing site, and the Aswell survey of the properties. We'll stay here for a quick minute here. So we're dealing with this deck that's in the back of the property that was built several years ago. It's been existence for more than five years. It is within that 10-foot utility easement as well as the side property line over here, and then also the fence at the back is over six feet high, in height's about 7'4 inches, and again, this screen here is also over six feet, so we're dealing with those three things. Again, they've all been existence for a while, except for the screen. It was recently put up. I believe it was in the six months or so back. This shows the existing deck. Again, approximately five years ago, it was installed. No permit on file for it according to the applicant. They asked the HOA, that's why I said they didn't have any issue with it, and they went and had it installed. And we have the rear fence here. Again, this is installed back in 2010, so it's been existence for, you know, well over a decade. One of the things, you see, this section here is higher. It does provide some buffer from this shed at the back of the property behind them. And lastly, we have the side screen here, which was installed for privacy reasons, and also kind of looking from the inside what, what the screen is doing. Again, kind of screens that other windows to provide more privacy for the applicant. So overall, again, no real issues here. This has all been existing for a while. We do have some conditions to kind of address some things that weren't done in the past. Again, you have the permit is required to be, required for the deck and the fence, so they have a code appliance inspection. Again, one thing too with this, setback reduction applies only to existing structures, so again, you can repair it and that sort of thing, but again, it only applies to retaining existing ones, not anything new. And lastly, an encroachment agreement is required. That's currently in process. It will be, it will be on the agenda at the same time as this putter vision, and that includes staff recommendation.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Is there anything you'd like to add to the presentation? Is there anything you'd like to add? Okay. Thank, is, yes, sir. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
My name is Janak Patel. I'm a resident of Columbia County since last 38 years. I live at 3704 Clark Crossing, Martinez, Georgia. I'm a mechanical and structural engineer, and the allegation made by the neighbor that this deck is weak and could fall down has no ground because this is made out of six-by-six wall, and the structure is very sound, and if you do even a back panel calculation, it can hold more than about 30 people, and 30 people cannot fit even there, but it is so strong that it's not going to fall down. So I'm just giving my opinion as a structural and mechanical engineer that it is sound and it's not going to fall down.
All right. You have no problem with allowing for the code, code inspection to be, be made?
I have no problem making-
Which would support what you're saying?
Yes, I will.
All right.
The egress from the deck is perfect. The stair, which is about seven and a half and 11, which is supposed to be per life safety code, it meets the code, so from life safety code point of view, there is no violation, so I don't see any problem from not only structural, but also from life safety code point of view. Thank you.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Please come forward. I didn't see your hand.
My name is Jack Scott. I live at 1036 Barrett Drive, and for my non-paying job, I am president of the homeowners associations for Barrett Place, homeowners. The, and I got to know Ms. Bella because she wanted to put a barrier for privacy. And so I met with her, and we walked outside, walked around, and to follow up, I can't compete with a civil engineer, but I was an engineer in the Army, and I was a builder for 11 years, and like he said, that's one of the most sturdy decks I've ever seen in my life. And, but I think, and she would, is rightfully so, needs that barrier for privacy purposes. Hopefully, that you'll strongly consider.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 220803, major putter revision, new building setbacks at 1016 Barrett Drive.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes 4-0. Mr. Butler, file RZ 220804, conditional use for massage.
Mr. Chairman, I request for conditional use for massage at 535 Blackburn Drive. Currently zoned P1 professional. Shows location of the property on the north side of Blackburn Drive, just off Furious Ferry Road. During the property, again, we got P1 on both sides of Blackburn Drive, behind it some PDD, Planned Development District, and then across our below, or to the south, excuse me, we have an S1 there as well. Aerial view of the site. Again, this is all, you know, office, an office complex essentially. It shows the existing site as well, and the plaque of the property. So overall, the conditional use, just to kind of get into it a little bit, it does have a, a sale license that crosses that hurdle really quickly. In terms of how they're going to operate, it's from 10:00 to 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Sunday through Friday. It'll have maximum six occupants at one time. It'll have two additional employees, well, excuse me, four employees, two licensed hours therapist on, on staff. Again, no, no real issues with this. Again, the sale license is really the biggest thing from our standpoint. Future land use side of things, this is off, just off the professional corridor on Furious Ferry. Again, that's supposed to have professional development within it. It's already zoned P1. This use makes the intent of future land use map, and staff recognize the approval of the request.
And this approval would be just for that one particular, because there's massage approved, there's already massage-
Yeah, so if we can go back, yeah, there's one-
In the back corner?
Yeah, well, that's fine. Let's keep going. And again, this, these are not all one parcel or anything, so, yeah.
And this would be permanent or just as long as they occupy the location?
Permanent, it goes with the property.
Okay, got it. All right. Gentlemen, any questions? Hey, is the applicant here? Yes, is there anything he'd like to add? Please give us your name and home address.
Mr. Benjamin Carr, 701 Macon Avenue. So this is, will be a veteran for veterans. I'm a disabled veteran, and 98% patients be veterans coming directly from the VA. So it is open to other peoples, more of a pain management clinic. It only has massage because that entails some of the physical therapy modalities that we include inside our treatment for pain management. So I'm familiar with some of the concerns in the area, a little bit of the history. I've talked to some other massage therapists regarding, you know, the process for this county for a while, so I'm understanding that, but I'm, we're a whole lot different than a typical spa or relaxation, pretty much geared towards pain management. And attorney's own went over everything, and I've checked with a lot of the people to make sure all the ducks are in a row and ready to go.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you very much, and we appreciate your service. Is there anyone else, excuse me, that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 220804, conditional use for massage at 535 Blackburn Drive.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ 220805, RA to S1.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to S1 Special for a landscaping company at 5560 Berks Mountain Road. This is the location of the property on the south side of Berks Mountain Road and currently zoned RA as are all surrounding properties. It shows the area of the site and the existing buildings on the property, and the existing site from the road. So you can see there's quite a bit of vegetation along the, the road frontage there. So in terms of the, the use of the property, the applicant does live on the site. They did apply earlier this year to relocate their business license for Cardinal Lawn Care to this address. Unfortunately, they're a bit outside the bounds of a home occupation, so that did necessitate the rezoning request. With the S1 zoning, this is a use-specific zoning district, so the only uses allowed are those that they have specifically applied for. In this case, that is the Lawn Care and Landscaping Company. It falls under the Contractor's Office use in our code, and then we do have a proposed condition clarifying that the residential use is allowed under the RA zoning district would remain allowed on this property as well. So the existing building is split, living space and shop space, and then there is some outdoor storage involved with the business as well. That includes the carport down here that stores pine, pine straw, as well as some employee vehicle and work vehicle parking on the property. A lot of the other structures you see are personal, so the additional carport over here is storing the boat and camper. We are not concerned with as part of the business. That's allowed on a residential property. Patio and the pool are also residential, not part of the business request. In terms of future plans for the property, the applicant has indicated they do not intend to grow this business beyond its current scale. They do plan to eventually add a pole barn onto the existing building. Per the narrative, that is for recreational use. As stated, there is no request with this for any type of public outdoor recreational use, so this would be for private use by the property owner, and then they do have plans to add additional houses on the property. The property is 10 acres. It does have space to do that with either subdividing the property or under the S1. The main concern with this is the, the potential for the business to expand and take over a larger space on the property. Currently, they're using about three acres of the site. As mentioned, the, the property is large enough to subdivide, so we do have a proposed condition that the business use be limited to the western half of the property, not to exceed five acres, and that they do subdivide the property to clarify where that line is, where the business would operate on the western half. The eastern portion would then remain zoned RA for those two future houses that they intend to build. In terms of future development, this is in the rural character area on the future land use map. This area is intended for preservation of the rural character of the area with large lot residential and agricultural uses being the dominant development pattern. A Contractor's Office is a light industrial use. That is not one of the primary future land uses in this character area. However, we do have several recent examples of Contractor's Offices that have been rezoned in these rural areas when they are on larger properties and can provide appropriate buffering. We've done at least three in the past couple of years. We do have proposed conditions regarding the buffering on this property. As you saw from the site photo, the existing buffer, at least at this time of the year, is pretty good, so we do have a condition that addresses year-round buffering to make sure in winter months that it is still sufficient and to require adding, you know, evergreen plantings if it's not at that time. In terms of traffic, they do only have the three work vehicles. They are very, very close to meeting the traffic loads for a provisional home occupation, so in terms of traffic, it's not out of line with what we would expect in a residential area. Staff is therefore recommending approval with several conditions. The first clarifying that the use is already allowed under the Residential Agricultural zoning district will remain allowed under the S1, that all construction complies with the minimum setbacks required in that RA zoning- required in that RA zoning district, that minimum 40-foot buffers shall be maintained along all property lines, including the road frontage, and requiring the coordination with the county landscape architect to ensure that the plantings along Berks Mountain Road are sufficient. There is an exception in those buffer requirements, it does allow a driveway to cross between the two halves of the property since they do intend to build the, the house later on that eastern section. And the final condition is regarding the subdivision of the property, so the portion of the property to be used for the business and not to exceed five acres and to be subdivided with the remainder of the property then remaining RA. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, is anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Thank you, Mark Ivy, 730 Stonecrest Lane, Appeling, Georgia, I live just up the road from Brock, and we have no problem with what he's proposing to do, see his guys come and go a little bit in the morning, a little bit in the afternoon, that's it, there's zero issues with traffic, you can't see most of what he's got back there from the road, pretty much year-round, we have zero issue with what, what's being proposed.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve RZ 22-08-05, with conditions.
Do hear a second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ 220806, M1 to PRD.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a rezoning of property off Baker Place Road from M1 Light Industrial to PRD Planned Residential Development. This is the location of the property, it's on both sides of Baker Place Road, immediately south of I-20. And again, currently zoned M1, to the south, we have the existing planned residential development for Tillery Park, you also have Canterbury Farms, and then some additional M1 and RA property to the west. Currently, it is undeveloped property, you can just barely see, kind of along here, there is an existing utility easement, broadband does have fiber in that easement, so they do have some comments that that fiber needs to remain undisturbed. And there you can see their fiber pole there on the existing site photo. So currently, Tillery Park is approved for 789 lots, looks like this, the proposal is to add the section at the northern part of the development outlined here. This adds an additional 82 lots, that includes 22 additional single-family attached or townhouse units in this area at the eastern end, and then 60 additional single-family lots, all of these lots are using standards that are already approved for other, for lots in other sections of the PRD, so it is just adding the, the additional 20 acres and the additional lots. With the proposed expansion, the lot total would be 871 lots, with 118 single-family attached, that gives a percentage of 13 and a half percent in the development for the attached units. This is important because our comp plan does have a general percentage for developments in the neighborhood area, so for these planned developments, the guideline is up to 15% of these planned developments can be attached units, so they are under that guideline. And they are in that neighborhood's character area. Traffic also has several conditions on this in regards to kind of how, how this area is developing and the increasing traffic on Baker Place Road, they do have some conditions regarding additional traffic studies to, to verify traffic improvements are in place as they're needed, there is an additional entrance proposed with the new plan, that is proposed to be right-in, right-out, that is likely feasible, but it will take some additional traffic study and likely some improvements on Baker Place Road to make that happen. The other portion of this request is a major revision to the PRD to expand the boundaries, as shown, and to modify the road layouts to connect to the, the new section. Again, this is in the neighborhood's character area, this area is intended for future residential development, this property also does not have great access other than through Tillery Park due to the, the geometry of Baker Place Road in this location, existing guardrails and curves and such, so it is likely quite a bit better for it to be residential development rather than industrial development being accessed through the neighborhood. Staff is therefore recommending approval with several conditions, these first ones are carryovers from the previous approvals for Tillery Park, to ensure that the same conditions apply to the entire development, so the lot standards and the narrative do not include a maximum lot width, that each building permit application includes the signed approval letter from the Architectural Review Board, that the parks are not to be reduced below those shown on the concept plan, and that the pedestrian connections outside of the right-of-way must be shown. And then the following conditions are from traffic engineering, these are in regards to the traffic study that has already been performed, and commenting that the county may require updated traffic studies or modifications to the traffic improvements that have already been made, depending on the, the future phases and the operational issues possible on the road, and that traffic contributions from Tillery Park Drive and Baker Place Road may result in a need for signalization at the intersection, so there is a, a traffic signal warrant analysis conditioned as well. And then the traffic calming measures, which is our, our pretty typical condition for residential developments. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
How many additional attached homes, 24 we came up with?
22.
22, okay. All right, gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, Mr. Ivy.
Thank you, Mark Ivy, 730 Stonecrest Lane, Appeling, Georgia, be happy to answer any questions, you've got, I've also got Jason Winkler here and Matt Perkins as well on our development team to help answer any questions you might have.
I think the main concern I've got is the number of attached homes going up to, I think, 80 in that one area, and it being so far back, what, I'm just worried about the traffic concerns and the congestion that's going to create in that, in that area, and I know it's backed up against the interstate and that's the easiest thing to do there, and.
You don't want to put your biggest houses against the interstate.
I understand that.
Put your most affordable back there because that's the most likely to sell, there are, you know, two ways to get in and out of there, so it meets all the fire code requirements, we take into account when we lay all these out with driveways and parking spaces and try and provide extra spaces for guest parking so that there's not a lot, there's really no room left over for on-street parking, so you have to provide areas for them to park off-street, try to do all that as part of our engineering design.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thanks, sir, we may ask you to come back up.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 220806, rezoning from M1 to PRD, and major PRD revision off Baker Place Road.
Do hear a second.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion fails 2-2. All right, Mr. Butler, file RZ 220807.
There's a request for a major, our major S1 revision, excuse me, to allow daycare use at 4201 Southern Pines Drive, currently zoned S1 Special. Shows location of the property in the intersection of Southern Pines and Furious Ferry Road. And currently zoned S1, again, around it you have some R2 to the west there, north, also all this R1 across the, across Furious Ferry, and then to the south you have Jones Creek Planning and Development, as well as a townhouse development as well. This is the aerial view of the property, and the plat of the property. This is back in, oh, 2005, we have the approved zoning, they've built most, not most of, they've built basically this section out, or in the process of building that section out, they have not gone to this site yet, that may be in the, the future at some point. But what we're looking at, or, excuse me, the previous site conditions on, again, rezoned 2005, you do have two portable classrooms that were removed, so that the new education building be constructed, that is what we have here, again, that's where the daycare will be located, is, is within this education building. In terms of the use itself, it looks at about 60 kids within the building itself, also the play area here, they'll have to meet both our standards in this, and the state, should have plenty of room to do that, beginning when it's happened before they can get their occupational tax. In terms of the building itself, it shows the sanctuary, again, already constructed, proposed classroom or daycare, excuse me, would occupy this building, and also the interior layout. And also the buffer, again, with, you have some adjacent residential, there's some question of, you know, could there be noise from the, the kids outside, do you have, you know, on the previous, or the, one of the previous slides we saw the building in front of the, in front of the play area, and also the buffer should be minimal impact to the residential properties. For the future development, this is within the neighborhood's character area, this does allow for these, for religious uses, civic uses, that sort of thing, so meets the intent of future development map. All is also in the consideration, staff recommends approval of the request for daycare.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, is there anything you'd like to add to the, to the staff presentation? All right, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Cora Parish, 609 Woodwalk Lane in Martinez, just on behalf of the church, appreciate y'all's consideration, great write-up, everything about it makes sense, and it'll be nice to provide to the community high-quality daycare services, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 220807, major S1 revision, we had a daycare at 4201 Southern Pines Drive.
Do hear a second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes 4-0. We've got three variances tonight in our public hearing section, Ms. Montgomery, file VA 220802.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a variance to Section 90-144, placement of buildings and structures at 774 Houston Lake Drive. This is the location of the property in Shoal Creek, off Columbia Road and Bel Air Road, and currently zoned R2 single-family residential, as are all of the surrounding properties. This is the aerial of the site, you can see it is a, a double frontage lot, and you can see the existing fence there on the aerial, that's actually kind of how we found this. This is the existing house and the existing fence, and we can see the fence does extend beyond the, the side of the house here, with a double frontage lot, a six-foot fence is required to meet the building setback, so it should be setback at least as far as the house in order to be compliant. The way this came up, this is the as-built of the site that, that verifies kind of the location of everything on the property, so we can see the portion of the fence that is within that front setback, it is also within the utility easement, which is identified by the dashed line there, we did reach out to Georgia Power for comments on this, they don't have any particular concerns with the fence being within the utility easement, however, it is the, the property owner's responsibility to repair any damage, whether that's from George Power having to access it, or, or any other issues that may arise. So how this came up was through a building permit for the swimming pool, this pool itself, the wall of the pool is at the minimum building line, so while there is space on the lot currently to move the fence back, it would require redesigning this pool, and the applicants have indicated that they would prefer to keep that additional fenced area as play area for their children. Again, this property is somewhat unique in that Houston Lake Drive is actually both frontages, so while it is a double frontage lot, the frontage is the same road, so we're dealing with a curve in the road rather than an intersection, so there's less concern with kind of vehicle collision or entering or exiting of the roadway in this location. The staff is recommending approval of this variance request.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, is there anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here who'd like to speak either for or against a particular variance? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Yes, my name is Fred McIntyre, 725 Houston Lake Drive, Evans 30809 in Shoal Creek. I'm the president of the homeowners association, and we have no objection to the, the request for the variance, doesn't interfere with any line-of-sight motor vehicles or any walkway, any foot traffic, so the association has no objection to that variance.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file VA 220802, variance to retain the existing fence at 774 Houston Lake Drive.
Do hear a second.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Most to approve passes 4-0. Ms. Montgomery, file VA 220803.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a variance to Section 90-135, signs at 3864 Washington. This is the location of the property in Martinez on the south side of Washington Road, currently zoned C2 general commercial, as are all of the surrounding properties. The aerial of the site showing the existing restaurant, and you can see the existing sign in this top corner. This is the plat of the property, doing a different building. This is the existing site, this is the existing Arby's, they are working on some remodeling work, so they are redoing the building signage and had submitted a permit to redo the freestanding sign as well, this is a non-conforming sign in this location, county code no longer allows pole signs at all, and certainly not ones at this height, the maximum sign height for this location is 15 feet per code, the current sign is just over 57 feet tall, so it is a little bit taller than that. Again, so this is the existing sign, 57 feet, four inches, with a sign face of 232 square feet, they did, again, submit for some revisions, so they had revisions to the building signage and then to the freestanding sign as well, this was going to drop the sign down a little bit to 53 feet and 11 inches, with a slightly different shape and slightly smaller sign face at 223 square feet, now with a non-conforming sign like this, they can keep it up until they start making structural modifications to it, so one of the, the triggers for losing that non-conforming status is doing things like changing the shape of the cabinet or modifying the, the poles, the supports for the sign, so the permit application to redo the sign was denied on those grounds, and they are submitting the variance to request to be able to do this. So this is the existing street view. The applicant has used as justification two other fast-food restaurants on Washington Road that have taller pole signs, however, both of these restaurants are in Richmond County, so they are installed under a different sign code, and are also very close to I-20, if they were in Columbia County, that would put them in an interstate overlay, that does have a different sign allowance, that does allow for the taller signs and some larger sign face due to the interstate presence, the location in Martinez does not fall within the, those criteria, they're actually about 1.3 miles from the interstate there on Washington Road.
Is this the first time anybody's ever tried to use Richmond County code to justify something here?
It's the first one I remember.
I've been, I've been on this board 15 years, I don't think I've seen that.
Probably not a great argument, but those are the, the two they, they used. In Martinez, what we are seeing is, over time, we are trying to hopefully change from these non-conforming signs to ones that are compliant with the code, so several of the businesses in Martinez have recently been installing compliant signs, so Stanton Optical did cut down the former pole sign, install a new compliant sign, Wendy's and Breaks for Less, when they moved in, installed compliant signs, the business across the street, which is the Hibachi Express and the former Taco Bell building, is also a non-conforming sign, they are about to have a conforming sign, they do have a approved sign permit to install the 15-foot-tall sign, that is being dealt with through code enforcement to get them to kind of make progress on that, but they do have been given 30 days' notice to finish that work. Due to all of this, staff is recommending disapproval of the variance in favor of basically requiring the, the sign to come into compliance with county code. Due to all of this, um, staff is recommending disapproval of the variance, um, in favor of basically requiring the, the sign to come into compliance with county code.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward and give us your name and home address?
Uh, my name is Noah Bradley, I'm, uh, representing Anchor Sign, um, from, uh, South Carolina, one-two-nine Charles Fort Way, Monks Corner, South Carolina. Uh, we originally opposed this pylon sign, um, just, we typically do this on, gotten approved across many states. I understand that, uh, sign code is, uh, it's to come into conformity, uh, fifteen feet high, seventy-five square feet max. Um, I did, uh, that is my apologies on, uh, using the Taco Bell and McDonald's, uh, I did not do enough sense of research and realized that they are in Augusta, Richmond County, uh, from your comments. Um, we do have backup plans, uh, for this, uh, if it is disapproved, um, but, um, just wanted to, for, um, our Anchor Signs, uh, perspective, we do this, uh, all the time. Done many of these projects, uh, plan to do these, a, a lot of these in twenty-twenty-three, um, so just wanted to, um, let you guys know that we have this engineered typically, most of the time, I know that there was some issues with the Georgia power lines, and, um, I know that that, um, was by the site maybe about an hour ago, and those power lines are within about five feet, six feet within the sign, so it does pose a safety hazard. Um, so I do understand the, uh, recommendation to bring it down into conformity and bring it down to a monument.
All right, gentlemen, any questions, staff? Or any questions of the, the applicants?
What you're saying is you've already got plans to, to, to bring you, bring us a conforming design, or I'm just, I'm, I'm confused.
Uh, yes. Yes, sir, uh, sorry, uh, this is our initial plan, uh, to, um, apply for the variance and get the pylon sign. Um, other plans, uh, we do have a, uh, ten-foot monument design that is, uh, also, um, we will probably remove the existing pylon sign completely, and then, uh, move the monument, put a brand-new monument, new butter, everything.
That's the design used at Hilton Head or Somerville or anyplace like that, that?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir, yeah, and so we'll, we would, uh, take it, uh, completely remove the monument, or, excuse me, the pylon, and put a brand-new monument in.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against a particular variance? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove file VA twenty-two oh eight oh three. Various is to allow modifications to an existing sign at thirty-eight sixty-four Washington Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to disapprove? Motion to disapprove passes four-zero. Butler, you have the last i- item of the evening, file VA two-two zero eight zero four.
Uh, Sheriff's Request for a variance, section ninety-five-three, list a lot of structure requirements, out at seventy-four oh nine Lakeside Drive, with a zone R four, recreational residential. Not true is building setbacks for existing structures and also some proposals. It shows the location of the property on the north side of Lakeside Drive, right up against the lake over here. And it shows the zoning and everything out there is on R four recreational residential. Aerial view of the property, we'll be dealing primarily with this area here, but also discussing the existing deck and the whole accessory building. Shows the existing site. And also the plat of the property. So on the site plan, so what we're dealing with, we have, these are the two proposed new structures, we have a carport and a pool. We're also dealing with the existing deck and also the existing accessory building. Uh, I'll start with the, the existing stuff first, it's kind of, it's relatively simple. Uh, this, this structure here is actually, uh, less than, uh, four hundred square feet, uh, and, and it is drawn a little oddly with how they have the, the setbacks noted. It's, um, it's actually being measured from the MBL, uh, instead of from the property line, so you gotta do some math. Uh, but basically, it's, it's less than, it's five, it's, it, more than five feet, excuse me, from the property line, it's less than four hundred square feet in size, so not an issue, but again, it is shown on here, not being MBL, so we didn't want to address that. Uh, with the deck that's already existing there, um, it does have some height to it, it is within the building setback. Uh, but again, it is up against the core property here, uh, again, the core was, uh, was invited to comment on this, uh, they had no issues with the request. Again, they typically do not care if you're up against their property lines, as long as you're not going over it, uh, so again, no concerns with the deck. Let's move into the, the proposed carport, uh, so again, we have the proposed carport here, uh, we'll see that in a moment, what, what that's gonna look like. Uh, that is, uh, basically seven feet from the property line against the property over here, against the neighboring property. Also the pool at the back, which also is about seven feet from the neighboring property, but does go pretty close, uh, to the, or at least the, the, uh, deck itself is pretty close to the core property. So one, one of the reasons why they're putting it here, and it is attached to the, to the, the residence, we'll see in a moment, I'll kind of give you an idea of what, kind of what those plans show, we'll see. Uh, one of the reasons that they are having to put it where they are is, they do have a set, a septic drain field over here, uh, their septic tank is in this general vicinity. Um, so they do not have a lot of room to really do anything on the property. Uh, there has been some, you know, some concern about the septic tank itself, uh, the health department had no concerns with it when they, uh, when they had, had their initial comments. Uh, they went and met with the applicant on site, I believe, it may have been in their office, but they met with the applicant. Uh, they have been issued a permit, uh, to expand that drain field, uh, so again, that concern has been addressed. Um, so in terms of the carport, if we go to the next slide, this is what, what it's proposed to look like. Again, single-story carport, does have on the back of it, coming out to a living space, uh, the pool is designed, uh, to be used for a, one of their children who is disabled. Um, so again, it does have a, a kitchen and a bathroom attached to it, uh, so it does have some appearance of it could be a residence, but again, the way it's designed, it is not intended to be that at all, and is also attached to the residence itself. So again, really no overall concerns, there is some concern with the, uh, the construction of it. Uh, again, because we are going close to the, uh, the core property and also going, uh, beyond the building setbacks. Uh, building standards has requested a, a survey before they do any, or reconquer, anything permanent, to make sure that where they're putting everything is gonna be where they said they're gonna put it. Again, it's to make sure there's no moving around of things as they move forward. Uh, lastly, we do have the building setbacks reduced per the project plot plan, um, and also no expansion of existing structures on the western private line may occur, they can, they can replace them, but they, you can't expand them and that sort of thing. That concludes staff recommendation on this variance request.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, is there anything you'd like to come forward and add? Please give us your name and home address.
My name is John Carter, seventy-four grand Lakeside Drive. Um, uh, for discussion with the pool, we contacted, we had some issues with neighbors, saying that the septic system was not, um, working properly. We've lived there for five years, had to have it pumped twice. Five years. We know people around the neighborhood saying that, you know, ass, those houses up there were not built intended for long-term use. Around that lake area up there. I had a concern, you know, doing the outdoor kitchen area around the pool, um, adding that extra bathroom, having it pumped, you know, twice in five years, and I had her come out. They recommended we add drain field. I do have a permit to do that.
How many feet of drain field are they asking to add?
Two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet, how many do you have? You have four hundred down, or?
Um, I, I don't know how much it's.
I wonder, so hell, it didn't four hundred, pretty much code?
I have no idea, at the end it was probably a hundred and fifty.
Think so?
Yeah, it wasn't.
Okay, it wasn't much, okay.
But in five years.
So this is another one of your problems that you brought to us, from back in the eighties?
But in five years, we've had it pumped twice, and we do, I have, uh, two children and me and my wife. Thank you.
All right, thanks. This is a public hearing, is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir, please come give us your name and home address.
My name is Scott Roseman, seven-four zero seven Lakeside Drive. We don't really oppose the addition in the pool and stuff, we would like to have some conditions added on to the approval, if possible. Um, first being security lighting, their current security lighting shines right through our windows on our back deck, we can't even enjoy ourselves. Due to this situation, we'd like to have a condition put on there. Have concerns about the plans being changed, possibly after they get a variance, um, to, but, you know, their initial plan was to put it up there upstairs, room, like a bonus room with a bathroom and stuff. And this is gonna be twenty-eight feet closer to our house, which, like I said, we don't have proof, a problem with that. Um, we do know the septic tank does have current issues, uh, they have lived there for a few years, and it's, it's filled up and had to be pumped. Um, we would like to make sure that septic tank is fixed properly, I mean, all the rest of us have to have proper working septic tanks, we'd like to make sure that they, you know, they, they do what's right, and I get theirs fixed also.
Sounds like they're, they're moving in that direction with the addition of a rain field.
We know the current one doesn't work, so we hope that that is, uh, that is something they're addressing.
Now, does it, what did the health department say about the current septic tank?
So they, well, exactly what they said. No comments or conditions, uh, from them on it, again, they had, they did comment to me, they were aware that, yeah, again, the, up there at the lake wasn't really designed to be permanent occupancy for anybody. Uh, so they're aware of, they're aware of, you know, tanks being under people's houses and not, them not realizing it, them building over the tanks and having issues, so it's one that, they're like, this is a common theme up there. Um, and again, there's more of, they went out there, they looked at it, and they've said, here's what you gotta do to mitigate the potential issue, that's all I can really comment on.
So do they make a recommendation on how many feet of drain field to add?
No.
Okay.
No, all, all they've done, so again, they've only given us a comment, so no comments or conditions, there's no condition from the health department. They've given them a permit, banned it.
Mr. Dempsey?
One thing that needs to be pointed out, if this is passed, it'll be passed, excuse me, with these specific conditions, it won't be that we say it's gonna be X feet that can be added, and then they can do more.
Yes, sir, okay.
Cause then they'd be out of compliance completely, and the whole thing would be shot out the window.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure you understood that, all right?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, did you have something you wanted to add on the drain field question? An extra two hundred feet, okay. Okay, that, okay, so add an additional two hundred feet to the existing drain field? Okay, got it. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to approve with conditions, or any additional conditions you'd like to add to disapprove or to postpone.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with conditions, file VA two-two zero eight zero four. Various to reduce building setbacks at seven-four oh nine Lakeside Drive.
Do your second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes four-zero. We have no legal matters tonight, staff or commissioner comments? We have any public comments? Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward and, and, uh, give us your comment? Please give us your name and home address.
My name is, uh, Mary Krueko, I live in Sumter Landing, uh, back in June, it was approved that.
Would you spell your last name, please?
K-R-U-C-K-O-W.
Thank you.
Um, back in June, evidently it was, uh, approved that the Mulliken Road, um, somebody bought the property, the few big lots on Mulliken Road, wants to propose on a conceptual plan, fifty-one homes. That evidently y'all put a sign up, I didn't even know about it, or I would have been here. But, um, they want to tie those fifty-one homes into our pump house. I live right by the pump house. I don't like the idea of fifty-one homes, it, more, being added to our lift station pump house sewage. And this property butts right up to the wetlands, which is something that I really feel passionate about, I don't want, you know, more development, but I guess, you know, it's gonna happen, but I just don't want, I'm not talking good, sorry, I ju- I just don't want the fifty-one homes added to the subdivisions sewage, and I worry about backflow. Because, like I said, I live right by that, that's, the only reason I found out about it is I saw the guy surveying.
Okay.
I go back there every day, this is what I do, and just photograph. I mean, and I'm an artist.
Where the fifty-one houses are going?
But it's going right by the wetland.
That's where you go photograph?
Huh?
That's where you go photograph?
Yeah. Yeah, every day.
Are you trespassing?
No, that we have a trail that goes back there. Though, my house is here, you got a trail that leads to the river, you got wetlands back there, and along this way, he's gonna build fifty-one houses, and that could impact, I want to know what the
What's the policy of?
Impact is on nature.
Well, I, that's not our concern here, that's already been done, I mean, but, you know, the, the, the first thing you mentioned was adding fifty-one homes to the lift station. How many homes are on that lift station, what, how do you determine the capacity of a lift station?
We're, we're getting some, some engineering questions that I can't answer. Uh, in terms of that, I, again, we've talked about a lift station, kind of on the edge of it, we haven't gone into, you know, looking at what it can handle as part of the actual submit of, of the plans themselves. I believe the owner's here this evening, he may be able to speak on some of what he's.
I hope.
Said already.
I hope.
But again, he's free to speak if he, if he wants to, or speak to you after the meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the things that they'll look at is, is, does it need to be upsized to handle the extra capacity? Uh, I can't tell you what, what that is or anything at the moment, again, I'm not with water utility, uh, so I can't tell you.
Well, I do know that before I moved in there, when there was an ice storm, there was sewage in the street, and I found out about this, of course, after I moved in. So that lift station has had issues in the past.
Now, you can rest assured that the water and sewer department, would you all?
I have called every department on this, I don't know.
Let me finish what I'm saying.
Yeah.
They would not allow fifty-one houses if it's going back up in that back station.
I don't know.
I'm telling you, they can't, there's regulations for it all.
In my experience with Columbia County, y'all usually let the developers come in and do things, and then you put the infrastructure later.
Well, since we don't know what we're doing, and everybody's remiss here but you, you need to talk to somebody else, we can't answer your questions. I resent you making that remark.
And ma'am, with that, I'm gonna ask you to sit down. Is there anyone else that would like to add a comment to the public hearing? Okay. Yes, sir, please come forward. And if you're coming to chastise us, I'll ask you to sit down, too.
I'll behave myself. I'm Fred Krueko, I'm a, our husband, uh, one-one-six-three Sumter Landing Circle. The, the real concern to several neighbors, we just kind of, we found out about this, honest to God, like, when all the markers went up, so.
Yeah, so this has been advertised, there's a process for this, and I understand, so it's.
I'll go ahead and say, a concept plan does not get.
Hang on, one moment, please.
So, a concept plan is not getting advertised on the property.
Okay.
Uh, there's no requirement to do that, there's no reselling action, there's nothing that's, there's no notice to the public for a concept plan outside of a, but outside of, outside of the actual agenda being posted.
Yeah, okay.
But anyway, again, just want to clarify.
Probably saying his problem about it, I was just, it, I, we were decided to come to this meeting, you know, voice of concerns. The real concern's the wetlands, obviously, that's my wife's concern, some of the residents concerned. Um, I just ask in the county to make sure they go dot their Ts, cross their Is, cause obviously it's on the Savannah River, it's a big thing. You know, with the back of the, I, I did look at the plan submitted, and I, you know, I think the neighborhood really doesn't have a problem with the fifty-one houses, right? Uh, the opportunity is, you know, how do we make that work?
And what I'll do is, I'll, I'll put you with the developer there, and I do believe he is gonna live in this particular area.
Yeah.
So I'll hook you all up, if, if we could, because again, we're going in a, in a, in a, in a, in a
In a circle, yeah.
In a circle here, so I'd rather you talk directly to him and voice your concerns to him.
Okay.
Honestly. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'm going to, uh, call for, uh, adjournment motion?
We move.
Do your second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to adjourn passes four-zero, seven-oh-eight. Next meeting, September first, twenty-twenty-two at six P M.